Anyone else that looks like we're missing, I'm going to resend. Missen... Jess? Betsy's there.
Oh, we're eating?
Yeah, they don't have dinner.
No, I didn't have dinner. Alright, well, I'll wait.
Do you warm up, Beth? Your nose is a little red, yeah.
Freezing!
You should definitely get something.
Yeah, do some jumping jacks.
That's good when you eat.
Or we're not going to have Peter again. It's just nine of us.
Okay, so the... The board is here.
Is here, okay. Shall we start? Alright. Welcome, welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 1046 at sequential adequate notice was given for call in this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton Packet and the Times on July 29th, 2020, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 recording devices required that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. The representative of the sending district is authorized vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 388.1. In the event this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central admin, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Mr. Bolden, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Beth Baron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Dan Dart.
Here.
Jess Deutsch.
Here.
Betsy Baglio.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Present.
Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda for this evening is the adoption of minutes for the July 28th, 2020 meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Brian, second. Second. Susan, thank you. Can we call the roll, please?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
You're on mute.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Did you call my name, Matt?
Yes, Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So, welcome to our meeting tonight. I just want to comment again that we continue, obviously, to be in the middle of a pandemic, and we are in the middle of a state of emergency, and so, you know, it may be August, but our people are working very hard, and we're grateful for all the hours that they're putting in. And we will be having board meetings for the next two Tuesday evenings because we will be looking at the restart planning and supporting that work. And in addition to all the other work that continues to go on, including the referendum projects and other just regular board business. And we thank the public for coming tonight to hear this meeting and to be engaged with us at the time when we're doing such significant things with respect to restart and bringing the children back and keeping our staff and the children safe. And we want to also thank the community for participating in the two recent public hearings we had on the naming of the JW Middle School. So, we appreciate that people have come out and have shared their views with us, and it's been very helpful to us. So, I would like to go to something very positive tonight. We have some good news with respect to one of our labor contracts, and Daphna Kendall, who is the chair of our negotiations committee, is going to fill us in. Thank you, Daphna.
Thank you, Beth. So, on the board agenda, on the agenda for board approval tonight is a one-year contract with our administrators' union, PAA. We are very pleased to have come to a compromise with the union, which includes a 2.49% salary increase and an agreement to increase the tuition charge by the district to $3,500 for existing staff and $5,000 for the children of new hires that are educated in our schools. Our business is educating kids, and we can't do it without our people. The administrators have been working nonstop throughout the summer, including nights and weekends, to develop a plan to safely open our schools and provide quality remote education if needed. It has been a priority of this board to come to terms with our administrators, and we're thankful for their partnership and leadership during these difficult times.
Thank you, Daphna. Now, do we want to move the approval of the ratification of that contract to this point, or do we do a superintendent report first?
Whatever.
Let's move it, because then Ramirez can...
Yes, thank you. So, we are going to, can I have a motion? We're on item F2, the ratification of the agreement with PAA. Mr. McDonald, motion, thank you. Betsy, second. And can we have a vote? And this is on the ratification of the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the Princeton Administrators Association, or PAA. And we could do that, we could do a vote on that, then. Is there any discussion first? If none, then we can go to the vote.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Unanimously passes.
Great. That's a really good news for us, and we appreciate the work that went into that, and we appreciate all the compromise and the discussions and the willingness to reach a consensus.
Yeah, if I could just add, and I was remiss, I wanted to thank the negotiations committee, Michelle Tuck Ponder, Betsy Baglio, Brian McDonald, and Debbie Bronfeld, and yourself, Beth, before rolling off. This has been, you know, months in the making, and it was a team effort, so just wanted to thank the team.
Thank you. And now, did we want to hear from Principal Ramirez? Louis, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you. Thank you for having me be a part of this this evening. I want to echo what Mrs. Kendall had said, that, you know, we are in the business of educating children, and, you know, we always want to do what's best for our children first. You know, and having an agreement such as this is just a tremendous milestone. So, today, we ratified the one-year contract agreement between the PAA and Princeton Board of Education and Dr. Galasso. We want to thank all of the negotiation team members for both the Board of Education and for the PAA. You know, to be able to come through with something of mutual agreement during a time when we're so focused on getting back into school to do what's best for the kids is really just a huge compliment to everybody who was involved. You know, we're very happy that we were able to reach this agreement, and just want to thank all members of our union, the PAA, and all members of the Princeton Board of Education and Dr. Galasso. We look forward to our continued work together, and I wish you all health and happiness. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Ramirez. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, I think then we're on to our superintendent report.
Okay, great. We have two items tonight that I want to just talk to the board about. Number one, we need to congratulate the entire school district for having a positive report from the New Jersey CUSAC report. This report is really an important document for the public because it's an outside evaluation of basic operations from instruction to fiscal management, governance, operations, and personnel. It's a hard standard to meet, and the fact that you have met and exceeded the standard in all five of the areas bodes well for the administrative staff, you have the teaching staff, the facilities people who are keeping your buildings up to date, clean, and accessible, and basically the instructional practice that's been implemented by the teaching staff. So, the entire school district should be complimented and congratulated. The Princeton Public School District will put the entire CUSAC report on the website for public review. It is a requirement that we talk about and make this public the first board meeting following the issue of the report, and it just came out last week. So, we're proud to present that to the public as a note of accomplishment for the Board of Education and the employees of the Princeton School District, so congratulations to all of you. The second item that I'm asking the board, and you may say, why are you asking the board to approve your reentry plan if you asked them last week to also approve it? Anytime there's a change, even a minor change, and we are constantly changing our reentry plan, we have to have it board approved, and we do need to notify the Executive County Superintendent. So, I want to share with the public what our plan is. The current plan I'm asking the board to approve tonight will change by next Tuesday. There's a lot of additional information that's coming into the district administration, and we're going to have to adjust some things. Let me explain why. Right now, we're running at about 38% of the public choosing the remote-only option. That's a little higher than it was in our previous survey, and the numbers seem to be growing in that direction. I want to make mention of one other thing. A parent or two have said, you know, I signed up for the hybrid, but I really am thinking remote, but I want to save my place in the hybrid. I'm going to ask you to let us know specifically what you want to do. If you choose remote and hybrid is successful, and you would like your youngster to go to hybrid, we will make that accommodation. So, I'm going to ask you to help us plan by telling us exactly what you really want for September, so we can put the best possible plan in place. One of the other issues for us is, you know, we're concerned about not only the health of our youngsters, but we're also concerned about the health of our employees. And we have right now 50 certified staff who are asking for accommodations to work from home. That's quite a number. We also have another 22 staff who are in support, and our support people are vital to what we do. You may look on our website, and you see that I met with custodians and maintenance people last week. You know, we can buy all the PPE, we can put all the Plexiglas in place, we can do all the bus routes and social distance, but without implementation by our custodial maintenance staff, our plan will not be successful. So, this is a team effort, and that's why I'm asking parents to be as honest as they can, understanding that this is a team effort. And if you make a decision today and you need to change it tomorrow, we're going to work with you. This is not, oh, you made your decision, and I'm sorry, we can't help you. This is a team effort. So, I mentioned the fact that we have 50 certified staff, and we have 22 support staff who right now are looking for accommodations to work from home. We're getting to a tipping point where it's going to be difficult to staff our schools, to find replacements, to do both a hybrid and a remote learning situation. In addition to that, we know from our preliminary results, there could be up to 104 people, and we're waiting for medical documentation to come in from our staff. So, if you're a staff member and you're going to be asking for remote, I would ask you also to help us out by sending that documentation in as soon as possible. So, our plan is this. I've asked the administrative staff, by this Friday and over the weekend, we will work to put together a final plan and recommendations to our Board of Education for next Tuesday night. At that point, we will make recommendations regarding athletics, we will make recommendations regarding hybrid and remote learning, and we will follow that up with a discussion at our board meeting. But in addition to that, I'm requesting that we hold a community Zoom meeting next Wednesday evening for two to three hours. The following evening, we will meet with our Spanish-speaking parents for another two or three hours. And the following day, we will meet with our special education parents to talk specifically about how we're going to deal with some of the IEPs and related services. So, that's all going to occur, and so, we have a lot of work to do between tomorrow morning and next Monday morning, when I hope to get this out to the board, and then send it out to the community. Also, I want to update you on our one-to-one. Our technology department has been, I just got an update the other day. They have an A-plan, and that is if all the equipment comes in on time, as you all recognize, there are thousands of school districts ordering Chromebooks and Macs and laptops and iPads. The Mac order seems to be on time. The Chromebooks seem to be a little bit of a back order nationally. So, we have a Plan B. We're now doing an inventory of all our devices, and we will make sure that our youngsters have the ability to have devices in the event, well, whether we go hybrid or remote or totally remote, because the youngsters are going to need devices by then. In addition to that, we are working with Comcast to make sure that some of our youngsters who have not been able to be connected in the past will be connected through Comcast. In addition to that, I'm requesting through a funder to pay for the year's subscription of 175 Comcast contracts. In addition to that, I'm requesting that they also fund for underprivileged youngsters 75 hotspots with unlimited access. So, not three gigabytes, but unlimited, so kids can do the research, work on their computers and devices in the evening. So, let's level the playing field with that. So, those are the kinds of things that I think we are attempting to do, and we also recognize childcare is going to become an issue. So, I'm also asking and working with a funder, and I'm asking for two things. 100 scholarships for the YMCA, which is our childcare provider, and also 30 scholarships to the YWCA and for our preschool kids. So, hopefully, with a solid reentry plan, that's, you know, and we heard the parents, and our teachers and our administrators are focused on a robust remote plan, because we're not sure exactly, we're going to have, we're going to have remote instruction, whether it's a hybrid combination or totally remote. We're going to have remote instruction. So, with standards, expectations, contact time, attendance by our youngsters, it's going to look different than it did last spring because our teachers are going to be better equipped, better trained, have more experience. They are anxious and willing to engage youngsters. One of the things I think is a hallmark of the Princeton staff that I've learned very, very quickly. You have wonderful professionals who are willing to go the extra step to, for the benefit of their youngsters. I have not found a faculty staff member, a support person, instructional assistant, who has not been willing to give 110% with regard to the effort that we're putting in. So, I want to commend them because I know the work they're going to have to do in the next 20-some days is going to be tremendous. So, I want to thank my administrative staff, who've been putting in seven days a week. And I know I'm going to be asking them for a lot this week because we have a lot of things to get done before Monday, but it'll be well worth the effort if we can put together a plan to keep student safety at the hallmark and provides an opportunity for our staff to engage with the kids at Princeton. So, I'll stop there.
Yeah. So, Dr. Galasso, I just wanted to point out that we could have the best-laid plans, but if the governor, you know, there's a rumor going around, every day I hear there's a new date, that the governor might decide, might decide to, you know, order that all schools open remotely. So, are we including that in our plans as well?
Oh, absolutely. Actually, I'm planning on, you know, the remote instruction is going to happen. It's either going to happen for half the kids, or it's going to happen for 38% of our youngsters anyhow that we now know of. So, our whole focus is on the remote learning. If I can get kids in front of teachers in the classroom, our teachers are great. They know what to do. I'm worried, we're worried about the remote piece, so our energy has been, is to build that robust remote opportunity for kids because our teachers are well skilled in face-to-face. I mean, that's their expertise. So, yeah, we're focused on that.
Yeah, Debbie?
Yeah, Barry, I want to thank you so much for going the extra, extra step to get somebody to pay for all these hotspots, to look at the Y and get scholarships for our kids. I mean, this is so... No, I know, but you're... Well, then, I'll really thank you when they all agree. But I'm really proud and, you know, to support you, and I'm really happy that you're going that extra mile, and you see to have equity, to have equality for our students, these are the things our students need. So, I just, you know, want to say I'm really, I really support it, and I'm really happy that you're taking all these extra steps for our stuff.
Yeah, and I want to congratulate, you know, it was Matt Bolden who came up with the Comcast agreement, and, you know, he should be recognized for that. And, you know, we have so many contributions by so many people, you know, that little vignette Keisha did for us to help parents look at schools a little differently, to work with their youngsters. There are tens of people, and I'm going to forget people to thank, you know, Elizabeth Collier, who's been with me every step of the way, and Mickey, and working with the, all the pre-screening materials that we're going to use for parents and teachers, her and her staff who work tirelessly. These are terrific people. You have great people in your organization, and they really need to be recognized and applauded.
I just want to comment in that vein, you know, we just went through two really important reports. We kind of reported on the ordinary, on how we deliver school normally under CUSAC, which is this kind of major audit that public schools have in this state every three years, and we haven't had one for six years. And I will say that, you know, the way that our staff worked to get ready for that report and the amount of work they put in, and it was in connection at the same time with Superintendent Cochran's, you know, transition, so there was so much going on. And I really, I really want to give a shout out to those, and we have our new senior administrators who, within a few months of stepping into their positions, were were kind of required to kind of serve up their entire set of documentation and their procedures, and it was all reviewed. And so, I just want to share, I'm sure all of my colleagues share our appreciation for the work that was put into the CUSAC process, and it came out, and it shows that we were doing our job, I think, very well before the pandemic. And now, we're in the pandemic, and I just think it has, all of our people have just risen to the challenge in a way that it's just been, you know, astonishing and wonderful and just really impressive to see. And I think all of us are really grateful to see you. You guys are working seven days a week, literally, and every week's a new turn and a new change. And as Daphna points out, you know, the governor comes out with things every couple of days that throw it all back up in the air, and you guys are just doing so much. So, I just want to, you know, express gratitude. I think, Jess, we didn't have a gratitude moment tonight, so maybe this is it. And I just want to make sure we give you guys credit, and we're not, nowhere's near done yet. We're getting ready to welcome the kids, and so, it's going to be a lot of work, and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else want to comment on anything, or? If not, we will continue. I think that brings us to our public comment time, our first one. Mr. Bolden, do you want to, we asked that everyone speak, limit their comments to three minutes, if you could say your name and your address. And as a matter of practice, this is not a Q and A with the board, although I will point out that it has been past practice, and we haven't done this with Mr. Galasso, but if the superintendent does want to make a factual correction or make a statement, I think that, I want to check with my colleagues, but generally, that's where we're comfortable with that, that Mr. Galasso could provide a correction. So, Mr. Bolden, if you'd like to initiate that.
Yeah, I think everyone's familiar with the drill. If you just raise your hand, I will call on you, hopefully, in the order that you raise your hand. There are no hands being raised at this second. Yes, there is. Marisabel Fernandez?
Hi, Marisabel.
Hi, sorry, we had trouble in muting.
No problem.
Hello, my name is Victoria Figueroa. I live at 56 Tarrantown Circle in Princeton, New Jersey. I'm a rising seventh grader at the middle school. The middle school has been presented with a problem, and I'm aware that there are many different opinions and thoughts on the matter. I'm also aware that there is no way to change history. But I feel that we can take away the responsibility of Mr. John Witherspoon's actions by changing the school's title to something more generic. By choosing a more generic title and not a name, you give the middle school the chance to be judged on its own merit and credibility and not on the reputation or historical baggage of the person the school is named after. People also have very different standards for who or what a hero should be. That is also why the middle school should be named after something that best and most closely represents what we stand for. Not a title that is directed towards one person alone, but rather the Princeton community itself. Thank you to the board for allowing this conversation to happen.
Thank you very much. I never would have guessed you were a seventh grader. Very well said.
Oh, unmute, okay.
Is there anything else out there that would like to speak? There is nobody else that are, is raising their hand at this time, Board President?
Then we'll just keep going. We are on item H policies, first reading. It's an action item, and it is policy 4141. Can I have a motion, please? Daphna, second. Susan, thank you. Is there any discussion? If there is none, can I see a, can we have a roll call, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes, sorry.
Etsi Baglia?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
So this is on the first reading of the policy that we're voting on?
Yes.
Do we do that? I thought, I thought they just went on for the first time, and then the second time you approved them.
Well, we're voting on this one, but we don't have to, but we, we're halfway through, so maybe we can finish.
Sure.
We voted on first reading, first reading, yeah.
Not typically.
Not typically?
No.
I'm not in the, I'm not going to argue with the board, but I think we've been voting on first readings for a while.
Let's, let's finish.
All right, let's do it.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is I personnel, and these are mostly consent items. And so I will read the, the title. And if anyone has any discussion or question, please interject. So item I, one, appointments.
Yep, I have an issue. I had sent an email about changing the date, the first date on this person. It should be 9/1/2020 to 2/4/2021.
Yeah, that should have been changed.
Thank you, Debbie.
Sure.
For the close read. And then item two is resignations. Item three is retirements.
Can I ask a question about resignations? I just wanted to know, Mike, if you knew if any of these were COVID related? Like, are people just done with education?
No, as far as I know, none of these resignations are COVID related.
Thank you.
Item four, curriculum and instruction.
Item five, personnel items. Sorry, yeah, personnel items. Which is tuition reimbursement. And that brings us to item J, business, finance, plant, and transportation operations. Item one, financial reports. Item two, adoption of plan to reflect state aid reduction. Item three, strategic communications council.
It's an action, Beth.
Okay, so this is an action item, the third one. Strategic Communications Council, writing and editorial support and media relations and social media services. Can I have a motion? Brian, second. Daphna, any discussion?
Yeah, I had a question. First of all, I don't understand the contract and the verbiage here. It doesn't match in terms of funding. So I was curious, I was curious for the timeframe of this, and I was curious about the funding.
So you're, you're asking, you're asking the timeframe? Well, the timeframe would be from, you know, tomorrow, if it were approved, probably through December, Deb. And that, that is the timeline that I'm looking at to, to deal with about a half a dozen issues that we currently have. Some of them are, are COVID related. Most of them are reentry. Some of them are with the racial literacy and racial programs that we're putting in place to effectively communicate them to various audiences. So, and the funding basically would come out of the communications budget that we, that we would be putting funds into to pay for it. It'd be, it's probably going to be, it's probably going to amount to about $25,000 when we're all done. It probably will not go to the $43,000 not to exceed. Matt did that because in the event that it did reach $44,000, then naturally this whole issue, even though it's a professional service, would have to be bid.
Right, so, so can we change the date? Because this basically says duration of calendar year 2020 to 2021. And I don't want to commit to anything for January yet, you know, I want to see where we are.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I don't have a, I don't have an issue with that. If we want to change the date from to August, from August 13th, which today is 12th, right? August 13th, I'm sorry, today's the 11th, August 12th through December 31st. I don't have an issue with that.
When you, when you say it's the, I'm sorry, the communication budget, I didn't realize we had a lot there.
I actually, actually would have to come out of the surplus COVID budget. It would not have to come out of the communication budget because we don't have, even Elizabeth is not paid out of a communications budget. She's paid out of technology. Actually, that's her, that's her, her line item. So we would have to use this as a COVID expense. And what I was saying is that we would put it into communications under a COVID expense.
And could we also change it to not to exceed 25,000? And then we can review it? We can review it?
September, October, November, December. I, I think we're going to have to say that it.
27,000?
Yeah, 27,000 would do it.
25,000?
Yeah, because you got the half a month in August, Deb. So you got 6,000 a month for four months, and then you have a half a month, so it's 27,000.
All right, well, that would be better not to succeed, sorry, not to exceed.
Yeah. But, but I want to be sure that I can come back in November and when we're, if we're very, very satisfied with what's going on, we're, we need, we'll probably need to revisit this at some point.
Okay, I would rather do that. I mean, obviously, everything's changing hour by hour.
Sure, I, listen, I have, I don't have an issue with that. We just have so many immediate needs that I need to get him started yesterday.
And they'll be reporting directly to you?
To me, to me. And, and actually, they'll be working, the liaison will be Elizabeth, because she'll be giving them the background, you know, for the various things, and introducing them to the individuals that I want them to speak to.
Great, all right, thank you.
Is there any other questions? If not.
I just like to add, so Barry, you mentioned you're going to list it as a COVID expense. And that's because you're hopeful, you're optimistic that we will, at some level, be reimbursed for our COVID related expenses.
You know, I know the, I know the federal government's going to end up passing a $1 trillion to $3 trillion package. I saw where even in the Republican and Democratic proposals, there are expenses being reimbursed to public schools for COVID expenses. I think if we list it under a COVID expense, I think our chances of getting it reimbursed are probably better than if we paid for it out of our regular budget. So that's why I'm saying we should put it in the communications COVID budget. And Matt is keeping a spreadsheet of all our COVID expenses so that, and, and he also opened the BIFEMA claim. So no matter what or how they fund schools under these new packages, whatever they're going to call it, we would be hopefully eligible for reimbursement.
Okay. If there's no other questions on this item, I think we can call the question. Mr. Bolden, can you read the roll, please?
So we're noting that we are, the amendment is changed, I'm sorry, amendment, resolution is changed. It's going to reflect through December 31st.
Yes.
At the not to exceed of 27,000.
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Etsi Baglia?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to item K1, which is the consent agenda, consent item. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda, please? Brian, a second. Daphna, thank you. Any discussion? If not, could we call the roll, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Etsi Baglia?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passes, consent agenda passes.
Great, thank you. And now we're on to our second public comment place. If anyone would like to make a comment, now is the time. You can raise your hand.
I don't see anybody right now. Anyone out there that would like to speak? I don't see anyone, Board President.
Okay, thank you. And then that will take us to our item M. But I think we, we as a board have one, yes?
I'd like to make a comment before we move to the other thing you want to do. Is that okay? Yeah, so I have three comments on the email that was sent out from PPS after the board meeting on 7/28/20. I emailed my resolution to the entire board and superintendent more than 24 hours before our board meeting. Timestamp was 7/27/404. That statement in the email, because I, I had thought we followed all the Robert's rules of order in terms of presenting things. And in the past, we have followed Robert's, I'm sorry, Robert's rule of order, which is why I didn't feel like my resolution had to be on the agenda or shared with the public prior to the meeting. The policy committee did not submit a plan to the whole board prior to the board meeting on 7/28/20, as stated in this also PPS mail. During a regular agenda item called Board Committee Reports, the policy committee shared an update from their last policy meeting. The board does not vote on committee reports. The plan the policy committee read was never approved by the board. It was shared with the board and the public at our open board meeting on 7/28/20. The last misstatement that I saw in the PPS email, the board voted against a resolution to remove the name immediately before public comment is complete. My resolution did not, and I repeat, did not state that the name needed to be removed immediately. My resolution was a commitment by the Board of Ed to remove the name. And I was very clear at the board meeting that I wanted the board to continue hosting several evening forums, school forums, and alumni forums so that all voices could be heard. Prior to my resolution, an evening meeting had not even been scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bronfeld. So I wanted to, we had a very, very positive public hearing last night at the Equity Committee, and thank you, Ms. Tuck Ponder, for, for sharing that. And it was a follow up to the first public comment hearing that we had on the JW renaming question. We had one in the morning and we had one in the evening. And as a result of that, we heard from a lot of members of the public. Some knew, some came back and talked again. And we had some really good thoughts that were shared and, and opinions about what we should do about the name with, at JW. And so just to clarify the procedure, we did have some procedural questions last week at our meeting. And we checked with counsel who confirmed to us that our bylaws specify that when we want to add something, which we can do at, at any public meeting at the end, which we're going to do right now, we're going to practice and show how it works. We can make a resolution and have it seconded. And then if a majority of the board wishes to place it on the agenda, we can do so. So I would like to read a resolution that, that is following from the, from the public hearing that we, that we had last night on the JW question. I think that the board heard from the community, and there was a fairly clear direction that people, people had. And, and we wanted to kind of act on that as, as soon as we could to try to, to move this issue forward. So I guess I would read, I'd like to read that resolution. And then if someone would like to second it, and then we can vote on to whether to put it on the agenda immediately. So the resolution states, whereas we affirm that our mission is to prepare all of our students to lead lives of joy and purpose as knowledgeable, creative, and compassionate citizens of a global society. Whereas we have heard from and listened to our community, including our staff, our students, longtime community residents, scholars, and alumni who spoke at board and committee meetings and who wrote to us. Whereas we are grateful for the alumni who created and signed a petition requesting the removal of the John Witherspoon name from our middle school, as well as other steps to address racism and inequity in our schools. Whereas we wish to acknowledge our history, including the pain, injustice, and complexity of our community's racial history, and move forward with healing, compassion, and respect. Whereas we wish to make all of our schools welcoming and inspiring learning environments for every student. Whereas we want to engage our students in the study of history and in being part of a community that honors and respects one another. Whereas we will not erase history, but invite our students, our educators, and our community to join us in choosing intentionally who and how we honor and lift up as inspirational figure or figures in our, for our middle school. Therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby removes the name John Witherspoon from our middle school. And in order for the school to have a designation, while the district gives thoughtful consideration to a new name, the board officially renames it as Princeton Unified Middle School on an interim basis until other names can be discussed by our students, our educators, and our community, and submitted to the board for consideration. Be it further resolved that we ask our superintendent to work with our principals, supervisors, teachers, staff, and community members to develop a plan to use the removal of the John Witherspoon name and the discussion of possible new names as a means of educating and engaging our students and our community. Be it further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the superintendent to take any and all such actions necessary to effectuate the change of the name of the middle school to the Princeton Unified Middle School, including but not limited to changing its designations with the Department of Education and its reporting systems and other such necessary notifications. So do I have a second for adding this item to the agenda? Jess, thank you. Could we have a, a vote on whether to add this item to the agenda? Mr. Bolden?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Etsi Baglia?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So now the item is on the agenda. And so now, yes, Brian?
I, I thought we were going to launch, but go ahead.
We're going to, so I guess we can move to have, we, we go to, now correct me if I'm doing this incorrectly, but we go to discussion, right?
Correct.
We are in discussion now of the, of the resolution. And yes, Brian, I recognize.
Yeah, I, I wanted to propose an amendment. Throughout the conversation about this, one thing has been very clear. And the policy committee spoke to it. And at our last meeting, board member Tuck Ponder spoke passionately and eloquently about the importance of addressing the racism and inequity in our schools. And many people believe that changing the name, while being a very important symbol, if it isn't accompanied by real and actionable efforts to address the underlying issues, it, it's, it won't be enough. And so with that in mind, I offer the following amendment to the resolution. And so with that in mind, I offer the following amendment to the resolution. It would be placed between the second and third, be it resolved, be it further resolved. And the amendment I offer is be it further resolved that we ask the superintendent to develop a plan for our district that includes specific actionable steps to address racism and inequity in our schools.
And so you need a second for that amendment? Is there a second for that amendment? We're, we're trying to amend the original resolution that was proposed. So Jess is offering a second. We need to vote on whether to amend the original motion. So could we vote on that, please?
Can you read that again, please? I'm, you know, not having this stuff in writing is very hard. Thank you.
One more time, I was trying to write as well.
I, I can, I can send it via the.
Further resolve that we ask the superintendent to develop a plan for the district.
Be it further, this was a strong recommendation from the policy committee. Be it further resolved that we ask the superintendent to develop a plan for our district that includes specific, comma, actionable steps to address racism and inequity in our schools. And I believe that Barry, Dr. Glasso, at the last meeting, said that this was something he wanted and intended to do. So I thought it would be good to have it as part of the overall resolution.
Thank you. Could we have a, so we've had a second. Is there any discussion of this amendment before we would vote? Yes, Tuck Ponder. You're on mute.
Okay. I appreciate my colleagues' gesture in including language in this resolution to direct the superintendent to develop a plan that's actionable. And, you know, to get something done, to put some teeth into this resolution.
Is there a time?
Our former superintendent was asked to do the same thing. And we have six years of non-achievement in our schools. And, and while, while I respect and appreciate the intent, I think to ask him, after being here six weeks, when he's got to open the schools, is probably not reasonable, nor is it going to result in, in anything, because he just doesn't have time to focus on that. Secondly, I think that that, one of the challenges, we spent a year and a half in the Equity Committee, trying to figure out what we mean by equity, trying to drill down and understand what are the challenges that are experienced by people of color, LGBTQIA, special ed students. And it's not something that we can do like that. It is, it is something that needs to be thoughtful, that needs to solicit community engagement, where we can figure out a way to address some of these biases and, and discrimination that kids actually feel inside the school. You can call the school Bob's Burger joint. If, if, if that's not going to have any kind of substantive effect on the experience that our kids have in that school. So, you know, on one hand, we appoint leadership that, for that school that doesn't have any people of color. We, you know, we constantly do things that are contradictory to what we say we intend to do. So, you know, it is, it's, it's a struggle for me to sit here and think that supporting this, this is a, this is a feel-good thing. You know, it, it, it really is. And I'm really glad that people can wrap their arms around something and, and feel like they've made a contribution to, to address the disparities in our district. Taking John Witherspoon's name off that school is not going to do it. Now, I'm fine, we could, you know, we can do it, like I said, you can call it anything you want to, until you change the inside and until you address the culture of this town. I don't have any confidence that it's going to change anything at all. But I did want to expect, express appreciation to my colleague for at least making the attempt and understanding that. Thank you, Brian.
Michelle, I'd ask Barry too. Are you supporting Brian's amendment to the resolution that Beth read? Or are you asking him to table it? Or how do you intend to vote on it?
Well, she can, she votes, she just had a statement, she can make a comment, I guess, right?
Dr. Glasso, what's your view of the amendment?
Oh, I, you know, I'm more, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were, you were referring to me, Dan. I thought you were asking someone else a question. As far as the amendment is concerned, you know, I, you know, we're committed to racial equity. And I, you know, I understand what Michelle has been saying. If, from her, from her, from her vantage point, she doesn't see that progress. I can only tell you that I'm going to be here for a year, I guess. And during that time, I'm going to do what I can, demonstrate to the community actionable items that people can actually view as changes in the Princeton School District. We've begun that process, and I'm going to continue that. I, I sent a little tentative plan to you last month. I'd be more than happy to develop a plan with my administrative staff as soon as we reopen schools. We have pieces of that happening now, but I'd be more than happy to do that if that was the board wishes. And I respect what Michelle, her viewpoint. And I'm willing to, to do whatever I need to do during the time that I'm here to move the district forward. So, you know, I, I, I support the resolution. I, I have no issue with putting together a plan to move the district forward with regard to racial literacy and equity. I think it's a, I think if we, if we start that process now, I think when you choose your new leader, he or she will be able to take a look at what we've done, assess it, and, and hopefully continue the progress. As Michelle says, it's not going to happen tomorrow, but it can happen over a six-month, a year, a year and a half process, where there are actionable items that people can actually say, hey, they accomplished this, this is what they said, this is what they're doing. I think that's the way to build trust, and I think that's the way to build consensus and, and mutual respect and appreciation for what the district stands for.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Now we can vote on the amendment to the motion. So let's vote on Brian's amendment. We could.
I, I do have, are we voting on the motion yet or Brian's amendment?
Voting on the amendment first.
Okay.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Upstain.
Motion, amendment to the, motion on the floor passes.
Thank you. So now we're back to the motion on the floor. And are there any other discussion of that?
Daphna?
Yes. So with your resolution, we're looking to change the name intermediately to Princeton Unified Middle School. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I'm wondering, would it just make more sense to have a deadline to change the name so that we don't have an interim, you know, name for the middle school? Because what are we, you know, that raises a whole kind of logistical things like a sign and, and everything else. So I guess I'd like to propose an amendment to have this process done and a name decided upon by the end of the year.
Do you mean the end of the school year, Daphna?
Sorry, December, the calendar year, December 31st.
Well, you would leave the name John Witherspoon there? By the end of the year.
Well, I say, I think what I would say is we're resolved, we are committed to removing the name. We'll undergo a process to, with the community and hear from everyone and have a, you know, have this, you know, finalized, a new name by the end of this, this calendar year. Because I didn't hear on your, your resolution, is there, do you have a deadline? No, there's no timeframe.
I think we could put a timeline in there. I think we said, and this, you know, I didn't write this myself. I think a number, the policy committee kind of worked on this last night after the, after the hearing. Let me just look.
Can I ask Barry a question? Does it make it easier for you or more difficult to have an interim name? I, I think.
I, I talked to the attorney today because that was direct, you know, that was the direction from the board last night. You know, I'm, I didn't hear back from the executive county superintendent. I did write her and inform her that the board may be doing this. But I, I am going to have to, you know, notify the department because John Witherspoon Middle School is, is recognized as the official name. I will have to write to the department. We will have to make some notifications. But he didn't see it as a major deal. There's probably five or six notifications that I need to make, according to him, and that should suffice. Now, the only thing I would add is if I ran into a problem with a department that our attorney doesn't know, then that could be an issue. You know, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I, in this pandemic, you're not really getting a lot of responses from them, to be quite honest with you. So we could send a letter and say, hey, we're, we're going to use Princeton Unified Middle School for the next foreseeable future. And that may suffice, I don't know. But I, I don't anticipate a big problem. I, I don't think you should hold it up based on our notifying individual, you know, individuals about the name change. Does it make it easier if it stays John Witherspoon? I'm sure it would. Does it, does it make more sense if you're going to change the name to probably do it now? I mean, you heard, you heard, you heard, at least I heard last night from a couple of former students and a current student that when they walk into that school now, they have a negative feeling. So, okay, if that's what a youngster feels, that's their perception, that's a reality, then probably we ought to change the name and whatever it takes to do that. That's just another, another, you know, another job. It, it's not going to be, I don't believe it's going to be a big deal.
One of the things we heard last night, we heard from a parent who said, you know, for, not for one more day should we have a student walk through that door and, and feel that the, the name of the school causes any harm or any sense of, of not belonging, not being welcome and not respected. And so I think that the interim name gives us a chance to remove the harm and then have an educational process that our educators have spoken to their excitement about contributing to and, and working through with our kids. So to me, I, I think this, this resolution gives us a chance to remove immediate harm and to hear from our kids. And, and that's the piece that I, I think there's a lot more to be done, to hear from our kids about what would be inspiring. And, and, and we've heard from some, and, and we, if we remove the harm, we have the opportunity for, for a really, I think, inspiring process that, that the kids can lead.
Do we have, so I'll amend my amendment to, can we just have a deadline as to when we think we can come up with a name?
And I would, oh, sorry, Brian.
I, as a point of order, I note that Jen Vigioni has raised a question about, now that we've introduced a new agenda item, will the public have a chance to comment on it? And I believe she has a perspective on, which she has shared with us on engaging our schoolchildren and how that might be done. And that might inform this conversation about a timetable.
And I was just going to add that I, I'd like to suggest perhaps by the end of the school year, rather than the end of the calendar year, because I think that's going to be here on us in a quick.
I all agree to that.
So there's a amendment to the motion to add to the paragraph where we say that we ask our superintendent to work with principals, supervisor, teacher, staff to develop, develop a plan to use the removal of John Witherspoon name and the discussion of possible new names as a means of educating and engaging our students and our community. Do we want to say over the next school year? Or what would you like to say?
So my concern is really, because, I mean, the superintendent is, has already in his six weeks here done a lot to address some equity concerns, and he continues to work on it. My concern is to have a, a, a goal line for the community, because this could go on for years, as we all know. So I'm, I'm just saying, let's, let's put an, let's put an end. And I think Betsy's, you know, suggestion is a good one.
Did you say that again? Could you repeat it?
Sure. So, I mean, the one thing is, it'd be nice to come into 2021, like with some new things, but I'll, I'll defer to the fact that we're in a pandemic and we're all very busy. Somehow, I, I'm not so concerned about directing the superintendent, because I believe that's underway, and it's not something I would want to put an end date on. My concern is on the name change process, whatever that is determined to be. Can we say it will be completed by the end of the 20 to 21 school year?
Yeah. That'd be great. And why don't we say, we are named, but, until other names can be discussed by our students, education, and community and submitted to the board for consideration by the end of the school year 2020? Which one, by the end of?
But I want us to have, make a decision. Yeah. I want there, I want it to be final.
Or.
A board decision. And the policy committee can say, all right, this is our timeline. And it just has to conform so that, you know, June whatever, 2021, we've come to a resolution.
Or our June board meeting, we vote.
At the latest.
At the latest.
At the latest.
It might be earlier.
Right.
Right. At the latest.
But probably not, because you're right, we're all very busy.
Consideration for a board decision by July 1st, 2021? Or no later than, or something?
No later than the 30th.
June 30th.
Then we're not into the new academic year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's the amendment to the motion. Can I have a second? Yep. Dan? Can we vote on the amendment? Please?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yep.
Yep.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder. Michelle.
I'm thinking.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Motion, the amendment passes, the second amendment passes.
So now we have the original motion with a timeframe, and we have an additional development of a plan directive for the superintendent with actionable steps. Is there, and there's a question, is whether we should hear from the public before we vote? So is there any more board discussion? Yes, Brian?
Yeah, I, I just want to note that I very, very strongly support this and am grateful to see that the board seems to be embracing this opportunity and in a very thoughtful way. My one question for my fellow board members is that while this made it to our agenda through the appropriate, you know, the appropriate way, it, it wasn't on the agenda and it, you know, the public was not made aware of this in the future. I'm sorry, in the, you know, before the meeting. And I just want to wonder, particularly with respect to Jeffrey Allen and the 1,500 alumni who signed the petition, whether we feel an obligation to do this next week so that they may be able to participate and, you know, feel gratified by being present for the vote. It's just a question.
Someone want to speak to that? Dennis, I saw you shaking your head. Did you want to comment?
Oh, I appreciate the the sentiment behind Mr. McDonald's question. And I'm wondering whether there's another way that we could, perhaps at the next meeting, acknowledge gratitude to everyone who's been a part of this process and, but for right now, take this action, because I think we've, we've. but for right now, take this action because I think we've, we've gone through the process. We've, we've heard, um, from the community in the way that we, we suggested we would. And, um, we have an idea here that I think is reflective of, um, of our values and a good process. So I, I would be in favor of continuing with the vote tonight.
Thank you.
And I think we can, uh, thank Mr. Allen for, you know, uh, getting the ball rolling and recognize, um, that everyone can make a difference.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, um, I feel we have to vote tonight. Um, but personally, I find it extremely frustrating that two weeks ago, when I brought this up and I didn't realize we had that other policy, but I shared this with the entire board. You guys could have helped me write it a little better or told me to go through these processes. It, it's honestly, personally, very infuriating that two weeks ago, you know, you guys were like, most of you were like, I can't do this, I can't do this. And the reasons that you all gave me are fascinating that they're not all the same reasons right now. So I, of course, will be voting a big, big yes. But I just want to say as a board member, it's really frustrating when we see something and we hear our public wants this, that it took, you know, two weeks to get this done, a letter to go out to, you know, every PTO and this and that and discredit like everything I wanted to do. And, you know, it's just, it's really tough. It's tough not to be able to do things with this board. It's tough to not move ahead. It's tough not to make actions and things. So I just, you know, for me, it's really frustrating. Um, so I cannot wait to vote on this.
Oh, I think we can make a commitment now that we have this, that we've done this. And of course, it's been a very messy process. Um, I think we can make a commitment to, you know, I'm sure everyone agrees to, you know, support each other in, you know, the furtherance of our public schools.
Yes, thank you, Daph.
And children, and children. It's, this is about the children.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm really pleased with the whole process because I feel like we now have heard, we told the public we were going to hear from them twice and we did. Um, and I know that some people still wanted to speak and, and they wrote to us. And we can't always, you know, take things, we can't go on for a week sometimes as we did with the bathrooms at the, the high school. I know there's always people who want to have more to say and we want to hear from them. But sometimes we just have to make decisions and I, I feel good. I, I'm glad that we're able to do this together tonight. So does anyone else have any more comments?
Can we open this up to the public, um, who are on the call tonight?
But yeah, just with that, my question is, um, after we open up to the public, can we return to board comment in case the public's, uh, comments?
A new issue.
Give us any reason to discuss this further.
I, I, does that make sense to people? I think, I think that would seem to be a good process. Okay. Mr. Bolden, do you want to open it up for some, a public comment on this issue in particular?
Jennifer.
Good evening. I really do want to thank you for, um, the process that you've gone through. I've been at the public meetings, which had been scheduled, uh, for the renaming of JW. Um, I think you've heard, we were able to end early yesterday. So we know that everybody who, um, wanted to speak was either at the morning meeting or at the night meeting yesterday. And so, yeah, it's, it's been pretty awesome. I'm glad that you're embracing the students working on it. Um, I am in the second part of the restorative practices workshop. Um, I think that's one actionable item that you can say, we trained many, many teachers this summer, um, both in part one and some in part two for restorative practices. And I was able to speak to a former third grade teacher. She's now in a different grade level. And she was talking about how great it would be to get the third graders involved because of their Princeton history and they try to make it alive and make, um, connections between the past and the present. And this would be perfect and tangible even for the third graders. So I think this is a great thing. And, uh, thank you for pumping the deadline because there was no way any teacher was going to be able to make December 31st for that. So thank you. And, and I also think that we're also making a commitment to making sure everybody is getting, um, the equity training by our consultants um, and the course that's going forward, um, in planning now that's going to be going for all the teachers. So, um, after years of really dilly-dallying, um, and making heart, you know, half-hearted efforts, I think we are going much more full steam ahead. It's never going to be enough. It's always going to be hard work, but I think putting smart goals to it where we have, um, specific goals and timelines, et cetera, um, is really going to make a difference. So I do appreciate the support. I think this is going forward in a positive way. Um, and I'm looking forward to continuing that work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keisha.
Hello. Actually, Jen Vigone took, um, a little bit of what I wanted to comment about. I'm very excited about, um, what's being proposed tonight. And I also wanted to talk about some of the equity work that's been happening over the summer. And I think there's, you know, definite steps that we're taking that I know as a, a black educator of color who works here, I'm very happy with the current course of action and the fact that there are steps being taken that, that have clear connection to not only improving outcomes for students, but also making sure that, you know, we are setting a good course for the work that happens in the district. So I'm just very pleased about the steps and I wanted to, um, state that. Also regarding the specific choices of the name, I'm excited to hear that it's going to be continued conversation that includes, um, the public. Especially, I'm hoping that, um, Mrs. Satterfield should return to continue her conversations because I truly believe that the history she has of Princeton in particular, you know, is, is just such a wealth that we really should benefit from. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keisha. Anyone else?
Yes.
Tim Charleston.
Good evening. Uh, I'd just like to speak on behalf of, uh, the administration at JW for, um, for this, uh, name change and, um, that we're ready to do whatever we can to engage our students and teachers and staff in the process throughout the entire year. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim. Marissa Bell.
Thank you for listening to my statement and for like what I had to say. I'm very excited to be a part of the new middle school name change and to see what it's going to end up being.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Kim Marks, um, one of the co-presidents of the PTO of the middle school. And I wanted to thank the board very much for putting our kids first here. Um, and I also really wanted to acknowledge what, um, Michelle Tuck-Ponder said about this, um, needing to be accompanied with all of the efforts of, of bringing the school community together. Um, and so again, thank you for all of the, all of the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I don't see anyone else.
Okay, thank you for that. And is there anyone else on the board who would like to, to speak at all on this item?
So I have a, I have a comment, if that's okay. Um, uh, and, and we could do this next meeting, but what about setting up an ad hoc committee? For naming, um, renaming John Witherspoon Middle School. And in addition to board members, most likely, you know, whoever wants to be involved. But also I think we should ask, uh, Ms. Satterfield and, um, Mr. Allen, if, if they would participate on that as well. And I, yes, Barry?
No, 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 I was just going to say, I, I thought we would, I thought, you know, that would be part of the action plan that we would put together.
Okay.
Putting together a board, uh, a board and administrative and community committee.
Great.
To, once we decide on the process, you know, so I would think over the next three weeks or four weeks, we would, we would develop that committee to start working. Once we, you know, we set a, we set the criteria for what we want to do and how we want to do it.
Great. And I was just responding to one of the commenters who said that we should continue to hear from Ms. Satterfield. And of course, we've all.
I was, you know, in my own opinion, I would like to have her as the historian and the co-chair of whatever this happens to be because she really has a perspective that very few people that I've heard from the community have. So in my own thought process, when I was thinking about this earlier today, I thought that she would, you know, I would, I would reach out to her and ask her if she would be one of our co-chairs so she could provide the, um, the historical background to make sure that, you know, it is a learning opportunity for kids. If we're going to engage kids, you got to have someone who knows the history so that they can explain it to them and then have them debate it. Uh, I, I, I think that would be a real good learning opportunity for kids.
Okay. And Mr. Allen too, let's not forget him.
You can't forget Mr. Allen and I, and I was going to comment earlier, but the fact that he didn't wait is good because I heard him last night and he was anxious for this to occur. And I think he'll be pleased even though he wasn't here to be, to be part of it tonight.
Thank you.
So my, my comment would be to Brian's question about postponing it. I feel strongly we should have the meeting, uh, the vote tonight. So I'm enthusiastically supporting it. But I also want to publicly thank Debbie for her persistence and patience. Thank you, Debbie.
Michelle?
Um, two things. One, I want to say, I don't think that we can really talk about, um, John Witherspoon School without talking about Mr. Bill Johnson, who was the principal of John Witherspoon Middle School for many, many years. A, a very highly respected person across the community who understood that, um, all children needed to be cared for and, and, and mentored and help to grow. So when we talk about changing the name, this is not just about Brown children. This is important that children of all colors understand the history of the name of the person that the school is named after. Um, that's point one. My second point is that I hope that I see the same enthusiasm and speed, with the board when we come forward with substantive suggestions or recommendations that will change the lives of kids in the school. I hope I see the same speed and enthusiasm. And I'll be delighted if we see petitions with 1,500 names on them. But I hope that we take this opportunity to be committed, not only on the outside of the school, but really, really what happens on the inside of the school.
Thank you.
I know there's another petition that was going around for, um, racial literacy because I know my boys both signed it. So there's, there's more, yes, our community is pushing us in many ways and I'm happy to support that, too. And I would, I would just also say, we've sent a lot of names of people who are important to this process. I also want to say Jason Burr, the principal now at JW, has been a very, um, enthusiastic participant in these conversations to date. And I, I'm hoping maybe Mr. Charleston is texting him to let him know that, that this is happening now. But, um, certainly we know he'll be involved going forward.
Ms. Cantor?
Um, I just wanted to echo what Michelle said because I also was thinking of Mr. Johnson as we were having this conversation. And one of the things he always did each year was educate all students of all colors about the history of Princeton, how, how his 40-year tenure, 36-year tenure, progressed and, and the, the racial, um, the racial meaning of him being principal and also what the school meant to the town. So continuing that kind of education, which I saw my children get each year from him, I think is really important and very important to the process that it continue. Um, and I agree with Michelle too, that changing the outside does, it, it, it enables kids to feel like they have the opportunity to be heard, but we have to make sure they're really heard and that we make significant changes. So I echo what she said.
Okay. Thank you all. And I will say, I had a very, um, interesting conversation with Mr. Johnson a few weeks ago because I gave him a call and I said to him, what do you think of all this? And he gave me, and he talked to me about the history for a good hour and it was really, really enlightening and, um, helpful to me to understand better. And he's, he's been generous and I hope he's going to be, you know, willing to be part of this history and help us with some of that. So I think we're ready to, um, call the question on the original motion as modified by the two amendments that we've approved. And, um, we can certainly circulate that immediately or I can, can write it up and try to make sure the public can see exactly what we've approved. But are we ready to vote? Can we call the question? Yes? Okay. Mr. Bolden?
Do you think of the motion in second or is it already on the, I guess it's?
I think we already motioned second and we've had discussion and we've had a public comment and then more discussion. And now I think we're calling the question for the vote. So I think we can run that.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Motion with two amendments passes.
Yay.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. So I appreciate the meeting tonight. We got a lot done and we ended on a good note. So thanks, everyone. Can I have a motion? We have a meeting next week, next Tuesday, same time, same Bat Channel. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Betsy, second. Daphna, all in favor? Thank you. Good night.
Night.